Time to get started. We're, uh, call our meeting to order. We're here at Doe Elementary School May 8th, 2025. Uh, happy Mother's Day to everybody, everybody online and our mothers who have gone on to their heavenly home. Uh, if you'll stand. We'll have a moment of silence and while we're, we're doing that, just remember next Thursday, our, uh, county commission. Uh, those ladies and gentlemen will be picking two board members to replace the two that we have missing. So just keep them in your day of prayers that they'll do their due diligence, which I know they will. They're, uh, some good ladies and gentlemen on there and they'll, they'll do what I know they'll do to, uh, do their best and do their job. So if you would, just bow your head for a moment of silence. Sever pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll please.
Mr. Greer.
Present.
Mr. Robinson.
Present.
Mr. Long.
Here.
And Mr. Cliff.
Here.
Um, recognition of visitors and delegation participation.
Um, I just want to thank Doe for their hospitality and, uh, for welcoming us and having allowed us to have our meeting here and spoiling us a little bit. So thank you so much Mallory and your staff and thank your staff for being here.
We may come back down here more often.
But thank you Mallory. Uh, Emily, you want to share some information from the parents coalition? Anything to share?
Good evening. As we conclude this school year, Johnson County Parents Coalition would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to this school board for your dedication and service to our community. Being in those seats isn't always easy. We are grateful to have people who are dedicated, who dedicate their time to the betterment of this school system. A special thank you to our representative Chad Greer. Your extensive knowledge and unwavering support have been invaluable to our coalition. You've not only advocated for students and teachers, but you've also achieved, uh, students and teachers, but you've also achieved bringing the parents to the table, fostering and collaborating in an environment that benefits our kids. So thank you. We also wish to express our appreciation to Dr. Sancox. For your cooperation, dedication, and attentive leadership, these past few months has shown your commitment to our students and our school. And it is evident and we are so grateful for your efforts. Please keep that momentum up because we're not done. Um, June is, uh, June will be the parents coalition's last meeting before we break for summer. Um, while we're in summer break, I'm still going to be working on our third grade retention ball with Tennessee Mill and our backpack drive for this winter. So I'll post it on that and thank you so much and I'm so glad to be here still. So thank you.
Uh, we have Misty Philippi here with us. She's just here on behalf of Johnson County League Football to ask for permission to use the field.
So, um, we are so thankful that we have access to the field house, um, to use to store our equipment that is much needed. Um, and then it keeps it very convenient to you when you can practice and then play on the field. Um, I just wanted to share a little bit about last year. You know, it, it was a, it was a rough season, um, because Hurricane Lane hit right in the middle of it. Uh, so that cut a lot of our games out and then when we did start practicing and playing again, we really had to, you know, be creative with the schedule because some counties were not as fortunate as we were. We didn't have any losses. But Hampton lost almost everything because their stuff was right there by the high school. So it was very iffy about who even was going to be able to come back, but we did. Johnson County came back and we had two teams last year. We had our Mighty Knights. Those are our little guys, four to six years old. They ended up winning the whole championship over the whole league. Um, and we were just so proud of them. And then our grass cutter two are our seven and eight-year-olds. They won division for, over the whole league for the grass cutters. So, you know, even though we had crazy events going on, we still had a huge amount of kids again. Those are the kids that are going to feed into the middle of the high school. And we're seeing the same ones coming back each year in football every year. We've already started sign-ups and a lot of them have already started showing up again. Now there are regulars, we call them. So being able to use the field and the tenant, uh, the, I'm sorry, the track field and, um, the field house is a huge asset to us and we are extremely thankful for that. So I'm committed to you again to ask if we can do that. We will start practices, um, July 31st to start. We practice until school starts. We practice three days a week, Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. And then once school starts, we just bump down to two days a week on Tuesday and Thursday. Um, the practices for football happen over on the track field. They practice over there. The cheerleaders, last year we put on where the high school cheerleaders now, like during games, and that were great because the grassy area where we were using can get a little watery. Um, and then we have games. We usually average about four to five home games, um, a season. So that, and I've worked that or I will work that up between the schedule, if we have permission with whoever takes, puts athletes in place because that's who we normally work with. Um, and make, and Mr. Oring, and make sure that it's okay that we can have any conflicting things going on. So that's what we have locked into this year.
Okay, with the coach change, um, so you ran it through.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you ran it through, then you picked coach, football head coach.
I'll make the levy bet is, yeah.
Coach Tressler.
Tressler.
Yeah.
Coach Tressler.
Tressler.
Okay, yes, I will, I will speak with him.
Yeah.
He's in the book.
Okay, okay. I will do that.
And then, um, also it's not on the agenda, but, uh, this happened this week. So Sally Snyder would like to just speak about the recent, uh, reveal of the TBA grant. Yeah, yeah, you can come up here if you want or.
Um, so last year Laurel Elementary and Doe Elementary started the TBA School Uplift Grant Program process and it's been a long year for them. They put a lot of work into it. Um, Dr. Eggers and Brian Taylor were the two at Laurel Elementary and then Ms. Greer and Ms. Frost were the ones that did it for Doe Elementary. So we had to keep it a secret. It's been a big secret to keep. So Doe Elementary won $10,000 learning environment grant. Laurel Elementary won $210,000. I get a motion, sorry. Um, it's a big deal. One out of six actually was awarded to, um, Laurel Elementary. I want them to come up and get a picture with me. Where would y'all like to be with the picture?
Wherever. In front of the Johnson County.
Yeah, you want to be in front of the side. The Johnson County Board would be.
Okay.
Tina?
I'll welcome her back.
Thank you.
Are we good?
Well, you, you scoot a little bit closer to the edge of the chat and bring it there. Bring it, you scoot a little bit closer to Sally. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your support helps to make this a success.
And, and I mean, Sally, I know the next round's coming up and I know Rum Creek, the middle school and the high school are, are, it's with, with Leon, so maybe we'll have another big winner.
All right, item number four, reported student board member, Jackson.
All right, so, um, got some stuff for me. Before I start on that, uh, I just wanted to, there's, uh, since we're wrapping up the school year, it's not a whole, there is a whole lot going on. Before I get to that, there's a lot, uh, uh, groups of students to recognize. Um, first off, uh, the track team has been doing incredible lately, breaking all kinds of school records. I couldn't find any, uh, pictures with specifics of that to put on here, but, um, I know I've got a couple of friends on the track team and they've been like breaking records like crazy. So really proud of our track team then. And I didn't even think about it until I just saw, um, Sally here, but, um, we had our, uh, Washington Youth Door Delegate, uh, for the high school. It's going to be Destiny Bear. Um, and she actually won like the overall contest with her story. So she's going to be entered into a drawing for, uh, how much is it Sally? She left, that's fine. Okay. Anyway, she's going to be entered into a drawing for some kind of scholarship. So that's really exciting for her. Um, okay. And now for what I actually did get, um, we had a couple of different inductions happen lately. We had our National Honor Society, our National Technical Honor Society, and our Thespian Society. So, um, a whole lot of students there as you can see. So we're really excited for all of them. Then, uh, we had our FFA, uh, elect their new year, uh, officers. You can see all those right there. Uh, then also Ian Lewis and Day Decker competed and, uh, placed second in the track and driving contest. So congratulations to them. Uh, next we had our Latin class, um, took their national Latin exam and they all did very well on that. So, um, I know their teacher is very proud of them. So congratulations to all those students. Then, uh, we had two, uh, concerts happen these past couple of weeks, um, with the band and the choir both performing for us. And I was at both of those. They were wonderful concerts. Um, the, uh, work that those teachers do is excellent. Those students are very talented. And then finally, I've got a whole bunch of, uh, senior dates happening this coming up week. Um, you can see all those there. Um, I'll go through and list it, but I guess the biggest one would be graduation. It's going to be happening a week from tomorrow. So wrapping up the school year, I'm sure, uh, we're all kind of bittersweet on that. Um, and then I just wanted to say, uh, thank you all for allowing me to do this. Um, I've enjoyed it. It's been a great opportunity for me. Just want to say thank you for having me here.
We would like to. We would like to give you a little something. It's been an adventurous year for you as a student board member and, uh, we just wanted to give you a little something to remember us by and say thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you so much, John.
Very well. I really appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And we will have a presentation for Jackson as the senior awards will have awards that have been prepared.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy. We look forward to having you up here with us next time.
Item number five, approve the agenda. Uh, hear our motion.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Uh, any further discussion? Call roll please.
Uh, Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Item number six, the consent agenda. Is there anything on there you need to, we need to pull off and look at separately? Uh, if not, uh, hear a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Call roll please.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Item number seven, approve following cords to be allowed to be worn by students after JCHS graduation.
Um, cords are responsible by the board. They have to be approved by the board because we all.
In fact, where the court ended up with something the board stressed several, several years ago. So where we went from the valedictorian, valedictorian policy where we changed it to the Latin and now, you know, we have the cum laude, the magna cum laude and the summa cum laude. We want to be able to distinguish each one of those. Uh, we also like for our seniors to be able to wear the presidential academic, that receive the presidential academic excellence award because it's so hard to get it as seniors because it's based solely on ACT. We'd like to have one for them. Uh, for FFA, for students who hold state degrees and high honors, we'd like to add that one. For 4H, and that's just for those students who hold state degrees and high honors and there's not, there's not. Uh, the TCAT graduation graduates, uh, we'd like to be able to add those. I do want to say that currently we have two high school students, um, that are graduating from TCAT right now. Uh, A.J. Langley and Lucas Bernard. They are our first group of students to graduate from the auto diesel before they get their high school diploma. So that is where Mr. Adams is tonight. That was actually at six o'clock. So, you know, we think that's a great honor. So we would like for them to be able to wear their cords that they get tonight. And then next year will be our first graduating class of the middle college. So our, our kids will have their associate's degree before they have their high school diploma. So we would like to recognize them with a, a cord as well because that's a great honor.
So we're approving these for future also.
Yes.
For this year and next. For this year and next.
Yes, if you have any questions, Dr. Long will be able to answer those.
If there are any questions, I'll make a jump. On your motion.
I'll make a motion.
Now I'll make a second.
Motion and a second. No further discussion. Call roll please.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Uh, item number eight, 2026-27, school calendar.
We're always two years and, uh, we did send this calendar out for survey with our faculty. Um, if you remember, we had a, we had three drafts and one of those drafts was a year-round long calendar draft. Um, we had 145 employees vote for draft one, which is the draft that we're presenting to you all tonight, uh, 48 for draft two and 43 for draft three, and that was the year-long.
Did we, we didn't have to send it out to the parents?
We didn't lot. If you would like for us to, we can. We did just because the overwhelming response with the employees were, they, they did not want that.
And as far as my data tracking, roughly 88% of parents were a hard male in the year. Hard male, okay. Eighty-eight percent are hard male, yeah, okay.
If you'd like for us to, we can, but.
But if he's got. That data I have to, that's it. What is your, pleasure, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the 26-27, it's local calendar.
I will second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Item number nine, approve and approve the adoption of science textbooks.
Next year is the adoption of science textbooks. Uh, the board has to approve. Just because we approve it does not mean we have to purchase them. I say while we have done, have an approval from the board. Uh, Mr. Hagman, do you have anything? He's overseeing textbooks now. Do you have anything you want to add?
I think you, uh, that's a practice committee, you know, when you buy them, you're working them out.
We have, we have a textbook committee and how many people did you have?
We just, and it's, it was.
Yes, and this was what they had.
One thing I found very interesting about this and I liked a lot is that it's another one-stop shop as far as you have to use one vendor. So it's got, you know, one vendor at the elementary level and then it's got another at the high school. So I think you all did a really good job diversifying what kind of options we've got.
That's, uh, in a new thing that we need to handle, which is reflecting the hard work that they've been through, the position where they made a reputation.
And if I'm not mistaken, it has been quite some time since we've updated science regulations.
Uh, what was the cost on that? I don't have my.
It's about $104.
And that's already built into the budget.
Yes, yes.
Pleasure, gentlemen.
Well, in a lot of ways, science doesn't change curriculum does. Um, I mean, we need to stay up to date on that. I do feel like we need to give our staff tools they can to educate the kids. You got any issues? I'm all for it, so I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I have to say that, I mean, I didn't make a motion. It's part, it's part of the rules of order. Part, part of the Roberts rule. Uh, call roll please.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Item number 11, 10, I'm sorry, I had to mark out. I was about to skip you. Discussion and approval for allowing the Sunflower Festival to be held at JCHS campus, July 12th. We set it, setting up beginning on Friday, July 11th.
The look on Renee's face is. Here I go again.
We had a great meeting with Renee this week. Uh, we sat down, uh, my folks and her and, um, you know, I feel like I definitely hope that the board will approve to do this. I think this will be a great thing for the community. If you've ever been to the Sunflower Festival and I've been every year, it's wonderful. So to be able to, to allow them to continue to do this, they do have their own insurance. So they have their own liability insurance. So that would, would cover that. Um, we, we met and the way that I think we've addressed every question that we had and, you know, some of the questions that she had. So, but, you know, again, if you have any questions for her and, um, we will employ at one custodian, well, actually two, one that would work from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM and one that would work from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM because we want to allow our high school to be open for the bathrooms. Um, that way they don't have to have quarter potties. And, uh, the cafeteria open when the tables out. So people can have a place to go in and sit down because it does get really hot and they'll have some shelter.
What about vocationals?
The vocational school. Um, we didn't talk about needing to have it open.
No, no, because we don't need it open. We're just going to use the parking lot.
Okay. So you think, I mean, you've got a plan laid out, just set everything up.
We, we kind of do. We're still adjusting. Um, right now we are thinking, um, the front, in front of the school, we're going to have four rows of vendors. Two rows on the back side. Um, and then depending on, we haven't quite figured out our fun zone yet. Thought about doing it in the lower, uh, around the fence of, you know, on the visitor's side of the football field and have it using that as our fun zone. Um, we really, kind of don't want it too far away. We thought maybe we'd put it in the track field, but been afraid it's going to be a little too far away from all the other stuff. Uh, going to use the, um, um, the stick grandstands for, uh, and have a band there with a cheerleader stand. Um, that's where we'll put our bands and then people can sit on the leechers and watch, um, you know, the music, listen to the music or whatever. Um, and then, uh, let's see, what else? Um, we, uh, we are volunteers. We, um, cheerleaders are going to, um, join us this year and volunteer and help us just kind of keep, you know, some sort of maintenance done, trash picked up and different things like that. And then of course we're a volleyball team. And they'll help us. We, Positive Thinkers is going to help us and they'll help us get all the vendors in if we need to. We're wanting to try to do it on Friday. That way we're not having to get there at five o'clock in the morning to get y'all, everybody in and it's just chaotic. So this is going to be just an amazing, amazing festival. I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. And I just wanted to thank you very much from the bottom of my heart that we are giving this opportunity to be able to have our festival and go on as planned because we have been just having a really rough time at it this, this year. So thank you for giving and, you know, believing in us that we can do this. And I think the partnership between us will be, will be good because we want to help the community and that's what we're here for.
Gentlemen. Y'all have been rough and I know there's been a lot of uncertainty. Uh, personally, I feel like it's a job of various levels of government, whether it be city, county, us, whoever, to try and foster as much good will and try and help things out like this. Uh, this is the community's biggest draw. It brings, it brings a lot of people to the area, generates a lot of revenue. Uh, and I personally really like the fact that we can try and partner with you all and make this happen considering everything that's going on.
I, I have to watch that series. I mean, you know, I am a vendor that day at the festival. I like the idea of the Friday so that it becomes chaotic, everything's sort of laid out. Because you feel five, five o'clock in the morning, you feel most of the time, the time you get ready to start the day. And so, you know, I, I think this is a, a very positive move for both organizations, both the Sunflower Festival as well as for us. Uh, but the important thing is that we have come up with an offering point to continue this and continue to foster it. And that's what's.
I've been with you since the start, so I ain't going to stop now. Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
And I gladly second their motion.
I ain't going to ask for a discussion. Call roll please.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, item number 11, approve on the county board education, five-year strategic plan.
This is just the, the plan we work on. Normally at Word Retreat, it's a little bit different this year. So, uh, it's just the thoughts and just an update of the five-year.
Like, is that what we've done every?
Every year for.
Every year?
Yeah. It helps us for the board of distinction and it's just one of the things that I think it's good for y'all to have a plan. I think that we're pretty good from what I remember this year.
Yeah, just make sure.
I need to do two classes and then go to eleven.
Three, okay. Do you guys have any questions?
So we need to break this question. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the five-year strategic plan for Johnson County Schools for the years 2025 through 2030.
I will second. Any further discussion? Call roll.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
And Mr. Long.
Yes. Tina?
So you have in front of you your financial summary packet, uh, the local option, self-tax and property tax collection and the budget reports. The school department at the end of April with 86.2% revenue received and 68.9% of appropriations expended in general purpose schools, 40.3% revenue received and 64.8% of appropriations expended in federal projects, 55.7% revenue received and 71.3% of appropriations expended in central cafeteria and Head Start, which is the fiscal year project, with 79.5% revenue received and 72.7% of appropriations expended for the month of April. Self-tax collections for the month. point seven percent of appropriation expended for the month of April. Sales tax collections for the month of April were a hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and five dollars. These numbers are up forty-one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars from the same time prior year. And property tax collections for the month of April were forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
So this sales tax increase is generating some significant revenue increases?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I, I hate to say that. I mean, it's not an increase. We're just...
We're getting the key.
We're getting the key, but it was already there. Yeah. A lot of folks didn't understand that. It was already there. We're just getting the key. Getting, getting it to come back.
Yeah, we're getting it back.
Getting it back, yes. So, okay. Anybody got any questions?
Tina? The fact that Halleco, looking at the first quarter of local option sales tax, I would be, I would be, I would rate the number, so, and then this can be a game changer for both, actually operating major communities, school system, caring for the city.
Yeah. But it will have to have a big one.
Well, it's hard to be used for everything else.
Yeah. Uh, anything else to call that? Thank you, Tina. Item number thirteen, oh. Don't have any. Uh, we have an addendum, discussion, approval of US Department of Justice.
And, uh, sorry for the addendum on this. We did get the information told after the board packet had went out. Uh, this is the COGS grant that we wrote conjunction with Sheriff Tesper, um, last year, myself and, well, Angie wrote it, uh, Angie, myself, Kirby and Sheriff Tesper. But one of the things in there we did was to update and, and add additional cameras, security cameras. And so this is off the state contract. Uh, we would like approval for that. It's funded one percent through the grant. But we would like to get that rolling so we can try to get these cameras.
Is one of those going to be added to the ones we were talking about last time? Ball field?
Well, now the ball field is a little bit out of the question at this point in time, because we don't have connectivity up there. This is basically the security cameras throughout the district at all the schools. We have a hundred and seventy-four old analog cameras that we were not able to upgrade on the original installation eight years ago. And this project will update all of those old analog cameras to ten eighty P or better cameras and also increase the level of storage that we're able to, uh, hold, uh, you know, for archival purposes, to go back and, and review.
Okay.
And this is quite literally, with the exception of about a thousand bucks funded to the county, so it's not...
It's not, correct.
Literally ninety-nine point six percent paid for.
Yes, sir.
I think Angie was saying. We're going to talk about the impact that the state of the state is going to have to get from the law.
Sure.
So technically, we're going to be...
Okay.
It's definitely a much needed upgrade. And we appreciate Sheriff Tesper actually bringing that through our teaching community and brought that in.
And thank you, Mr. Self, for giving me a very detailed work. I appreciate it.
More than welcome, sir.
And with that being said, I'll make the motion that we, uh, approve this Department of Justice COGS grant for this camera replacement installation.
I'll happily second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. No further comment? Call roll.
Mr. Greber?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Great.
I just have a few things. Again, I want to congratulate, um, A.J. Lang and Lucas Bernard, who graduated from the TCAT tonight. Uh, Mr. Adams is supposed to be sending pictures, so we'll get those posted on our Facebook page. Um, I do again want to thank them for their hospitality. Graduation is coming up and it will be on Friday, the sixteenth, rain or shine. Um, if for some reason it is raining, which it is not going to be, uh, we will move it to the gym. It's not long.
So you're positive?
I'm very positive, yes. Uh, end of school, I can't believe it's here. Last half-day with our students is May the twenty-first. Just getting ready for summer. Lots of professional development for our employees, uh, lots of trainings, lot, summer school, lot, lot going on. It doesn't slow down. Uh, our June meeting will be at Mountain City Elementary. So Christie, we look forward to being at your school next time.
Uh, you got a high bar to hold up to.
Yeah.
That'll make us dinner.
Send me your one.
Chad, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, next Thursday, we're going to have two new board members. And if they do, if they fall suit, like they did, maybe they'll swarm in that night. So Friday, that graduation will have a full board, so. Will be available to be at graduation.
They, they will not be listed. They will not be listed on the program unfortunately, because it will warrant... But we can have them listed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you everybody for being out. Appreciate y'all being here. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
We're done.